I'd like to call the city council meeting into order. I'd invite everyone to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the very heart of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We could have roll call, Phyllis.
Tim Collier.
Here.
Craig Koshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Wiley Sirk.
Here. You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our September 4th meeting. Have you had a chance to review those? If so, I'd look for a motion to either approve or amend.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. A motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First thing up this evening is the third reading of ordinance 2018-19 in regard to the city budget. Any comments from public council members in regard to the city budget before we look for that motion?
I just want to make a comment. The total budget with tax levies is $8,540,123. Our tax levy will be at $4,308,896 with a tax rate of 1.4454.
Tax rate again, what'd you say?
That's the worst case, right? Because that was, that's like, worst case based on, well, not worst case, but based on 20% less.
Yeah. It's calculated on the assessed value of 80% of the current assessed value.
But last year's?
So it is proposed high.
Right. Last year's was like 1.35 and ended up being like 1.15.
Correct.
Right. Yeah. Because they're very conservative in using the assessed value, so that drives the tax rate up. But when you actually use the true assessed value, that'll bring the tax rate down.
Yeah. I do have, what was proposed in '18 was $1.38. It actually came in at $1.13. And this year, we're proposing $1.44. And, or it was, it's a difference of $1.12. I'm guessing it's a 32% increase. But that's just proposed until we get the actual tax calculated.
The final rate will be much lower than the actual price.
And the true assessed value will make a difference.
Twenty cents, 20, 25 cents difference.
Okay.
This is '18, correct?
2018-19.
'19, okay. Then I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2018-19 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2018-19 on its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ten.
Sorry.
Can't read that far. And this one's, I like this one.
Yeah.
Ordinance number 2018-19, ordinance for appropriation and tax rates.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2018-19 on its third reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance number 2018-19 on its third reading. Phyllis would have a roll call vote, please.
Tim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Yes.
Wiley Sirk.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-19 in regard to the city budget has been adopted. Thank you, Phyllis. Jeremy, let's talk community crossings for a minute. Indiana Department of Transportation, is this the second year or third year? Third year for community crossings. We didn't apply the first year. Last year, we applied, had some flaws on our application, it got tossed out. And this year, we approved Jeremy to work with Toby Stephan, thank you, from Butler Fairman and Cypress, in working up an application. And Jeremy just kind of wants to briefly, we gave as a council, Jeremy, the okay to go up to a million dollars on this with the city having a 25% match. And he and Toby have been working, and I know they've been working some evenings and coming up with a plan on what they, we would like to apply for with INDOT. Jeremy taking away there.
Basically, what we're using Toby for is just the engineer's estimates, so we know that what we're applying for is going to be sufficient money. If you look at what we need statewide, it's more of some of the handicap ramps and a substantial amount of paving in different areas. You're limited per application to 10 streets or 10 areas. As you can see on application number 1 on the screen, there's 10 streets listed there. Total construction estimate, 5.6603. Requested funds from the state, $3.95, $3.25, which our local match on that would be $131,675. If you take this into real numbers, what's kind of ironic here is the $131,675 would just basically do street number 1. So if we were to take MVH money, the budget annually, and go out and do that street, that's what you would have, just that much street. Going down to application number 2. This was a little shorter application. And we backed off the million just a little bit due to some time restraints and also some of the handicap ramps and stuff. We're leaving ourselves a little cushion here, so. Application number 2, total construction estimate, 342, or 51750. Requested amount, 266,89564. The local match is lower on this one because there's not as many streets and they're shorter, at $85,62186. You can see a lot of these streets and a lot of these areas are kind of grouped together in little different pockets. They're probably some of our worst streets that we have. It's not all of them. These are some areas to where at some point they will need some infrastructure work, but it's not any time soon. You know, it's going to be down the road. It's something that we're going to have to straighten these streets up, you know, prior to doing water main replacements.
There may be some streets in town that are just as bad or even maybe a little worse than these, but they need infrastructure work underneath them, so they're not on this list.
Sooner, correct. Like Dirk Street, some of those.
Correct.
They're on the very near radar. Some of these streets listed here do need some work, but they're further out on the radar. So we're making, like, going off of this list, we're making a lot of these streets a lot safer to travel until we get to that point. And it could be by the time that they need paving again before we get to the infrastructure work. On this list, you can see where the grant application is due next Friday by 5. Awards will be made public at the end of October and the first part of November. So if you look at your total cost estimate of 869120, that's the total cost estimate. And these estimates are a little high, so we know that, you know, we have enough and we don't have a big shortage. The requested funds, 65189889. What our local match of all this is, don't worry, if we would get awarded both applications, would be $217,22261, which we put in, $225,000 into, for our match for next year in MVH. So you can see that we've left a little cushion there. On top of, and this is, do I think we're going to get both applications? Probably not. It all really depends on the amount of applications that come in and the amount of money that they have. For years, it was always set on a certain dollar amount for the awards. Now what they're doing is whatever money's in the pot and award date is drawn out. It starts over. Whatever money's in the pot in January, when they open us up again, that money goes out. They're looking at a pretty substantial amount of money going out this round, so we do stand a pretty good chance. Some of the other communities have shot for the million. Very few of them got it. Some have, some haven't. They are aware that we've not received any funds. The first year, we did not apply. You could choose the amount of work we're doing on First Street and they had your hands kind of tied on where your match had come from. We were using that match money that was in that account for a lot of the acquisition and demolition for the first year.
If I'm not mistaken, the first year was a 50/50, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a 50/50. Last year, I will take full responsibility on that one when I sent that application in. I picked up everything off my desk, played one night, axed it in, about a piece of paper, lay one in there, so I kicked it out. That's my fault. I've learned from my mistake.
No finger pointing.
But this is a very good application. Again, so we've spent a lot of time on this application. I sure hope that we get the majority of it. There's still about an hour and a half to go on this application to get everything exactly the way and not.
So a couple of questions. If we get awarded both projects, then do you have to put it out to bid?
Yes.
So you put it out to bid, and we have an engineer's estimate of 869120. And say a bid comes in and it's 850. The state's only going to give us 850.
They're all going to give us 850.
And then in the midst of the project, there are change orders and things cost more than, all of a sudden. State's not going to cover that, right? That's my understanding from other mayors.
Depends on who you talk to. They are changing some of their rules because of problems that they've come into. But remember, the comment I just made is whatever's coming in is the one out. So there's not going to be a lot of, a lot of room there for change orders.
Is this paving only?
Paving and restriping. Anywhere where there's restriping, there's painting.
But not curb sidewalks?
No sidewalks. On the flip side of that, right now, you have increased the paving budget going into '19. So those 18 streets that we have on here, say we get these 18 streets, we're probably going to be able to do an additional, probably 11 or 12 or more from this next year in this region of the city. So this would be a great paving year going into '19 if all this goes through.
Jeremy, quick question. This doesn't include sidewalks and handicaps and all that jazz, right?
No.
You guys, this is a perfect opportunity to get a lot of roadstone. And the reason I say that, when they're laying down their mill and fill in, there's not a lot of change orders. I mean, it's not like we're dealing with underground. We're talking about mill and fill and getting a lot of streets covered. This is a, in my opinion, this is a great, great opportunity.
And what they're really pushing you to do is like on the handicap ramps and stuff, if they're not in compliance, to find in a local contractor that can bring them into complacency and go on ahead in the paper and get them down.
Don't make it part of this project.
Because it's about a third of the cost, if not more.
I'm just looking at East Monroe Street, your first. Not just the road that's bad.
But they won't do like the standalone sidewalks and stuff. That's why.
We do it. We should do that.
What they respond to is, that's why you have sidewalk program. That's why you have other funds that could be designated for sidewalks and handicap ramps and stuff like that. There is some issues out there on Monroe Street that I don't want to discuss this evening. It'd be some type of small bit. I've met with Brett Knightman and Larry Cardy on some things that the school would like to see done in the next 18 months, the 24 months before they get the, all the reconfiguration done and get everyone moved out there. Some of this would go into this project, but it would be standalone from the paving. Because once, Craig's 100% right. Once you get into the flatwork, once you get into the sidewalks, once you get into the ramps, and you get into a lot of that other stuff, is when your problems come up and your change orders really get thrown out. By doing just the pavement alone, you're staying within your right of way. There's no environmental, there's no right of way, there's nothing else. If the people can see it, they like it. They don't understand what they can't see. They see you're doing a lot of paving. You're doing a lot of preventive, you're doing a lot of painting, you're improving the pedestrian safety and the learner safety. They're happy.
Don, can you scroll it down just to, on the first page again?
This is what.
Is there a committee at INDOT that approves these? Or is this one person that approves these? Is this a David Anderson thing?
It's a David Armstrong and a few other people. And I did speak with David in the last couple of days. He's expected our application. I had some questions. I wanted to bring the application up to David's standards just to make sure that he was satisfied with everything. Because he's going to be gone next week, so I don't. His time of review, what INDOT does is when you send these in, if you get them in early enough, they're doing a quick review. If you're missing something, they're sending them back to you. Last year, I was within the first, the last day or so of getting it in, there was no review time. It was out. He just told me yesterday, take a little time, breathe, look through it, make sure that you're good with it, send it in because that may or may not be where we're dealing with.
So when do you plan to send it in?
Tomorrow, maybe tomorrow, Monday, as long as everyone's fine with this, with these two applications.
Would you roll that back the other way? You said it was, I want to see the bottom number. You all done up there, Phyllis?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's 18 streets at 869120.
But all we're paying is 217.
Can I ask?
Right.
Under budget, true?
They're rated on the FASR system. It's a system that the state had to go in, or they mandated just two years ago to go in and rate every individual street. I had to go out and inspect the streets for the cracking, the deterioration and stuff.
So you're saying these are the worst?
They are the, they're vast groups of streets. And a lot of them are kind of in a group together that hasn't been done since.
25 years.
Years ago. So but you can tell who wants to build it, slurry seal, micro seal.
And then we, you know, this is the third year. The first year was a 50/50 match. We didn't have, we didn't feel we had the 50% to even go in. Last year, we tried. This year, we're in. This will probably continue on. We can turn right back around and apply again, so.
If you have the match, or if you get turned down this time, you can jump back on it again.
Do we need a motion, Kim?
Jeremy, we haven't budgeted in Rainy Dale, so.
Oh, no. That's just your report. That doesn't go into the, into the application.
I don't think we need a motion. We've already authorized, Jeremy, to pursue this and we budgeted in MVH, you know, our match. So I just wanted Jeremy to kind of explain to everyone tonight what he was looking to do. I think it's great.
We will go back to another tour of the community for a construction period of 90 days probably, but, you know.
Then it's going to be nice.
Because if you throw, if we would get all these and we throw another 10 or 12 on here, we're looking at paving almost 30 streets.
That'd be great.
Yes, it would be fantastic. Well, the other part too is if they mill it, they usually pave it in the next couple of days. So each street would be recovered quickly. And it'd be an issue of striding.
And what these are, these are milled two inches and put back two inches. Normally, in a lot of residential stretching, you can do an inch and a half and it'll get you.
Farther.
12, 15 years. If you do a couple inches, it's going to get you a lot longer than that.
Did you say that we had Rainy Dale on patrol?
I split it because of what it was all budgeted in MVH street.
Be a very exciting summer in '19.
Yeah, it will be good.
Huge.
But like I said, there'll be additional areas in Dugais. I think it's something between down there. And as I go through, I've been re-inspecting the handicap ramps and the light poles and stuff. And I'd like to sit down with you guys this fall or maybe early winter and go through the asset management plans and kind of know where you're at on your infrastructure. And it would help you to understand and it would answer Phyllis's question as how do you decide what you want, you know, and what you've got to go from there.
Excellent.
That would be a little lengthy presentation that we could muster up fairly quick, probably half hour, 40 minutes.
Very good.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we get a copy of that? I couldn't read that. I'm sorry. Jeremy, can you?
I just typed it up.
Can you melt some?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. You probably ought to wait till after we get.
Well, it'd still be nice to have a listen.
You don't have eyes behind your head. It was right up there.
Yeah, my neck's up there. I can't, you know. Us two would be in Germany.
The next thing I'm going to bring up would be with Phyllis. She wants, she has a resolution for transferring some funds.
I'm going to the resolution number 21. And last meeting, it was approved to transfer money for the police department to buy rifles. So they want to transfer $7,500 from the repairs to maintenance to other supplies. And these are transfers that are just within the budget, no new money. The other transfer is for local law enforcement continuing ad fund. Money wanted to have the guys go to some more training and he ran short within the account. So he wants to transfer $650 from communication and transportation to other services and charges. And the MVH street fund, Jeremy wants to transfer 500 from utility services to printing and advertising. Transfer 12,000, this is high because we've had to rent a lot of equipment. Transfer 12,000 from repairs to maintenance to rentals. A thousand from buildings to improvements other than buildings. A thousand from repairs to maintenance supplies to other services and charges. And then the other transfer is for parking rack. They just ran short in a couple of accounts. 500 from operating supplies to office supplies and 500 from machinery and equipment to insurance.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion then to introduce resolution 2018-21 by short title only.
Yep. I'll second. Thank you. A motion and a second to introduce resolution 2018-21 by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Tim.
Resolution number 2018-21, short title, resolution authorizing the transfer of funds.
Make a motion to pass resolution 2018-21.
Second. A motion and a second for adoption of resolution 2018-21. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Tim will pass this around or place the sign in the I column. Same as last.
I column.
Okay. And next and last that I have on my list is continuation of the discussion of the Madison Street Plaza rules and regulations. The last time we met, I think we made a little headway when we discussed it being rented to public venues versus private venues rather than for-profit, not-for-profit. I say we've kind of leave the for-profit, not-for-profit out of it and make it be more for public events or private events. At least that's kind of, I think, where we left it. And with that, I'll just go ahead and let the council.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, please.
I did look out for the water and sewer. I just took averages for the last, for like July and August for the water sewer bills. It was $111. Electric was 107 and the lights were 27. I think I only got one bill for that.
So which, excuse me, what was 111?
That was water and sewer.
Okay.
Electric was 107. And in the lights, the street lights were 27.
Okay. Was that for two months then or for one?
That one was just one month. I only had one. So and then I'm assuming we're going to heat that restroom for the winter and I don't know how much that will cost. So those are just some costs to consider.
Okay.
The electric bill will probably go down in the winter and the heat bill. But it'll kind of. Because the 27 is for the street lights. Is it on a separate meter or something?
Jeremy, is that on those decorative lights? They must have did that on a separate meter. Is that correct?
That's on, that's on a light meter and that's $27. All their decorative lights have to be metered if you're doing it for a chair.
Oh, okay.
They charge all the decorative poles that you see around here.
And those come on and off? Are they on a separate meter or?
I got a question.
And that also, 107, that must be a little bit louder than you would get for like the bags.
You think it's plugged into the outlet?
So what's the 107? Is that for the bathrooms then?
Yes. You've been running there originally.
Okay. Now what about the four plugs that are on the catery wall? Are those included in the bathroom then? Okay. So we got two meters, one on the 100 amp box outside that's got the plugs around the outside, the box, and then the other meter's on the bathroom with the four plugs exterior. Okay.
That's why the bathroom's harder too because you pull off the guy.
I got you.
And you have, we go forward and then that is one for saying you're running your central layers. One for being acquired and you will not have the gas.
You say that's electric for this?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know that. But there will be a little gas.
It'll be a pretty average bill depending on how far we kept it in there.
So the average monthly is roughly 240 something? Is that right, Phyllis?
245. Yeah. But that's for a whole month. And then we, you have some maintenance, general maintenance. Things are going to happen in that, in the restrooms. You know, there's going to be, believe it or not, sometimes someone's going to punch a hole in the wall or something. There's going to be things that happen. There's going to be maintenance.
There's going to be cleaning.
There is cleaning. I talked to Sue Milholland. She said on a bad day, it might take two hours on a bad day. If it's a small event and it's not too bad, then, you know, an hour, so. So a couple hours of manpower for restroom cleanings. We're also going to have, you also have supplies at the restroom. It's a big event. You got a lot of, you're going to go through a lot of toilet paper. Otherwise, there's no paper towels, so.
So we established that, I think we established that we want public events, no charge or no fee versus a private event.
I don't know, do we say no charge or we just say that's the difference is a public versus private? You're going to have similar expenses for every event, right? You had just say 50 bucks for cleaning of the bathroom regardless of how big that event is or how long that event is, right? So I was thinking about this and I don't know that, I mean, like the lights that are on out there. That's not a charge per event. That's just because.
Those are street lights.
We have street lights, right?
You have those on every street.
I think there's probably going to be some wear and tear, right? But is it reasonable to charge? I mean, we don't charge people for, I mean, we do. It's taxpayer money for walking on the sidewalk, right? Repairs come from that. We don't have a special, I mean, for events that we have on other streets, we haven't, there's a cost for potential repairs. This is a little bit different because it's more decorative. This is a little bit different because it's more decorative plants, so maybe that's covered through a cost, right? The actual use of the facilities is to cover the cost of cleaning and perhaps supplies for that bathroom and to share in the cost of.
The overall monthly utility.
Yeah. Which I think that if that's the case, you can probably get this, I mean, that's, I mean, that's two forty-five per month, that's heavy use. That's every week.
Mm-hmm. In the summer, yeah, we were done every, every Thursday.
Wetter time, we're not going to feed.
Water bill should drop down.
If there's no baths going on, there's no use in in that bathroom. You can skip that water sewer bill and be zero.
And the heat would be minimal to keep things from freezing.
If you're insulated, so tight and out of the, of the rock.
So in the winter months, basically, well, you say the average, like, we're still going to have twenty-seven, twenty-two, but that's just part we're going to have to eat because that's light in the street.
Right.
The one oh seven is probably going to stay about average for electric and heat and air conditioning then, right?
Yeah, probably.
Twenty-five, twenty-eight dollars a week. And the water sewer will just fluctuate.
I think you're still looking at, because you got, the bigger expense is going to be the cleaning per event, right? But if you're looking at two hundred dollars a month in expenses during the heat of it.
What about security? Was that a separate issue over and above the, any rental fee? Is that something that if your function is going to have over, if there's going to be alcohol there that you have to have a policeman? And if it's going to have alcohol with more than, what was it, two hundred people, I think, is what the Riverside Center was, and you had to have two? I mean, what are we, what are our thoughts on that?
I think that was changed. Wasn't it changed to, I mean, it said there needed one police officer, but if you were having over two hundred, you had to.
Right.
Get it okay by then.
Consult, please consult with the PD. See if additional officers are necessary.
I was fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
Yep, okay. On the, on the back page, I just had a note here that we always at the chamber, because we have the electric meters out there on the north side of the courthouse. And then also over here, we're partnered with four or five different groups on the electricity we have at Riverside Center. We just ask a vendor if they need electricity. And I think on the request for use of the plaza, on that form underneath the phone right there, we just put electricity and put box check yes or no. We charge, if it's a for-profit, if you want to hear what the chamber does, if we have like a fair or Main Street, if we have Rikikiyanga or any of those motorsports show, if we have a vendor there, if it's a for-profit vendor, we usually charge them twenty-five dollars for their area, okay? If it's, and then if they want electricity, we also ask them for an additional twenty-five. Say that again? If it's a for-profit.
If it's a for-profit, I, we usually would ask them for twenty-five dollars for space.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
And on the plaza, I would recommend that if they have a barbecue truck or something
that could actually make a mess, if they don't park it actually on the plaza, they would either be on First Street, if it's dry, put it in the grass, or they put a mat or cardboard or something underneath their vehicle where they're going to make a mess and take that with them.
Mm-hmm.
And no grease dumping in our drains. This is just some reasonable rules. But on electricity, I think that if we go, we usually, if it's a for-profit, we charge twenty-five bucks for, for space and then for electricity to cover.
And if it's a not-for-profit, you charge?
We don't charge them anything.
For either?
No. And the reason why is because they're not going to the same sponsors that we do, right? They're making money on their own and it's a public, they're showing, you know what I mean? It's the way we roll. I had another thing. I think that we, if, if it's a, if it's a non-public thing, unless, I mean, if somebody's done a pretty good job of cleaning it up and has a good pattern in a public situation and they're a non-for-profit, get what I'm saying? If it's some brand-new person that's never done something like this before, I might make some type of a suggestion for a deposit, just for making sure that they clean up the plaza afterwards or make sure they're taking care of it. The bathrooms, for example, picking up the paper, picking up the cigarette butts or the, any of the trash that's not on the, that wasn't on the plaza before, I think there needs to be a walk-around inspection post their use.
Mm-hmm.
And if they, if they do that, and if there's usual wear and tear, that's just life, right?
Right.
But if they make the effort and do that inspection, then we give them back the deposit, whatever that might be.
Right. If they recklessly, I don't know, destroyed one of the bushes that are there or something like that now.
Yeah.
But like Craig said, you know, at, at the end of every Thursday night concert.
Yeah, we have a group of volunteers.
We grab a group of volunteers and they come, they go from one end of the plaza to the next and they pick up every little piece of scraps and, you know.
Cigarette butts and everything. I like the thing about smoking in designated areas only. I mean, we've got some sand buckets and they're not the classiest thing, but in the future, I think if we wanted to buy the cigarette butt holders and just make it a designated area, I think that's a good idea. I like, I have a difficult time with bartending service ceasing serving thirty minutes prior to the end of the event. I think that needs to be the insurance that you have and also the bartending service that you have to the length of their permit. That's my opinion. And the reason I say that is because if you do have volunteers and you have a permit that says that you're going to go from seven to eleven, the bartender's permit says that, or from five to eleven, and you have people that will stick around to help you do these cleanup things, I mean, it takes a crew to clean up and if they have a beverage afterwards, I think that's not a bad reward. So I would leave that to the bartending service, license their permit on that one. So I'd like to scratch that last thing on that page, my personal.
This is under the bartending services?
It's under alcohol guidelines for the Madison Street Plaza. Now, with Main Street and the chamber, you have proof of insurance, but I think we need to really, I don't want to get too far into detail on this because I'm not an insurance agent anymore, but I, I think that they have to have proof of insurance for liability. We carry host liquor liability, which is a, is a phase between the city and the people that do the bartending service. So we have that layer of protection that we purchase insurance for through the Main Street and the Chamber. Unless it's somebody, I would assume that's either a five oh one, C three, they're probably not going to have that capability. And I can check into that a little bit more if you want me to do that. But I, you're going to have a situation with, with Tim one day that he's going to say, wait a minute, we want to make the city additionally insured if they're going to have a bartender here and blah, 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 to protect the city from this host liquor liability situation, is my point. Am I wrong?
Mm-hmm.
Why don't I check into that? Because that's something that we carry and certain carriers will sell if it's either for an event or if they plan several events, they'll do that. But I think that's something, I'm sorry, I didn't check into it prior, but I'd like to check into that and I'll take the lead on that if you'd like for me to let you back on something.
So if that's a private event, does that still count? I mean, it's still.
Well, you always want the city to be in the least indemnity or, you might speak. Well, we want, we want to make sure that the city is adequately protected and that we're not assuming a liability. So it's something that we need to check with the insurance companies to make sure that if it's a private event, you know, if an entity doesn't provide liability insurance, I assume that you're going to require that. So they're going to have to have either through their homeowner coverage, you know, if it's a, let's say it's a family that wants to have a family reunion there, that's going to be a private event. So do, are you going to require that somebody within that group produce a certificate of insurance that shows that the city is a name additional insured under that policy as our interests may appear? This coverage may or may not, we'd have to check with the insurance.
Host liquor liability?
No, this, this gap between what you were talking about.
That's what I care.
Okay, yeah. So I don't know that that would necessarily apply for a private event.
I'll check into it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I purchased this and tell them how many events I had last year and the insurance agreement keeps going on.
And, and what I would ask him is, does this cover only public events that are sponsored through the city or?
Public and private.
If we have.
Private events do cover it.
If it's a private event, if it's a family reunion, like you said, and they want to have alcohol, they still, I mean, the proof of insurance is one thing, but then they have to have an approved alcohol permit from the state of Indiana and then they're going to have to hire a bartending service.
Well, that, that bartending service gets that permit.
It's not going to, okay, but I'm just saying it's not going to be a family reunion where everyone brings their.
Brings their own beer.
Brings kegs.
Yeah.
Okay. They want to do that, they can do that and somebody's back.
Right. I'd like to chime in at any time here.
Back to the fees real quick.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
So are we, let's, are we, can we get to the point where we're setting a, what's the deposit?
We want people to use it, I guess.
Yeah. But if it's a deposit, I mean, it's only, they're going to get it back.
Yep.
So what is, what's the correct amount there? I mean.
We charge a hundred dollars for the deposit.
Yeah, I was just, suggest a hundred dollars.
What do we charge at Riverside?
I don't know.
I believe that Jimmy, it's probably the, it's a half the amount of the.
Hundred.
Red hole or there's some language in here, remember?
I don't remember exactly.
Yeah.
Hundred dollars is probably sufficient. For a deposit? Now, is that going to be a?
Will we talk about that for a private event then?
Again, you know, back to the deposit. If it's a public event, if it's the Chamber of Commerce and they're having a function there almost every Thursday, let's say, okay? Like Craig says, I think we have to have some exceptions to them having to pay a deposit, you know, it's just one of those things that.
Well, if we've created a pattern, I would hope that.
Exactly.
Who's going to decide what that pattern is?
What's that?
Who's going to decide what that pattern is?
Well, you're right. Yeah, if it's another public, if it's another public.
Well, the question is, is the farmer's market going to pay a deposit every time they set up once a week?
I never thought about that, but like, let's say somebody comes in and wants to have a pet to raise and I don't know them from anybody, how do we say, you have to pay a deposit if you don't? That, I don't know if that's.
Is that a private, well, your example, is that a private?
Would it be that big a deal for?
Well, each one of these things are going to come in front of council anyway.
Is that, would that be an event that the?
With the public's invited to, you're saying?
Yeah.
I, I mean, the deposit is a deposit, right? I mean, you're getting it back, so.
If you're good.
If you're good.
Yeah.
So I don't see where that's, I don't, I think that flies across the board, honestly.
It may be a way to, that way it holds a date too.
Yeah.
Like, you have to give the hundred dollar deposit, we'll give you this date for the event, so that two days before the event, you don't cancel it, somebody else won it that day. I'd say maybe a hundred dollars across the board, you're going to get it back.
Public and private?
I mean, yeah.
Do they forfeit the deposit if they cancel it within a certain? I mean, because a lot of times that's, that's what happens.
We're going to have rain.
So does that mean every week we put a hundred dollar deposit in?
The chamber wants to leave a hundred dollars in there all year long, they're covering all the deposits, I mean.
What's that?
It's going to come. It might be best like at the beginning of a, of a season, that you give a hundred dollar deposit, we just hang onto it all year and end of the season we give it back.
Yeah. For example, if I do twenty shows next year, the Chamber and Main Street does twenty shows and I throw a hundred your direction.
And we have.
Okay, fine, that's good.
Yeah, but if after, if after show two, there's a problem.
Yeah.
You have to bring another one.
Okay.
But I still think we have to cover the cost of, of the cleaning, the bathroom, per event.
That's where, if someone signs up, they may not want the restroom.
Right. But maybe that's where you make the distinction, that public versus private. If it's a deposit across the board for every event, but where does the city, you know, partner with the public? Is it providing those services, covering the cost of that?
Would you be able to? Because everybody that's going to use this, whether it's a public event or a private event, is going to have to fill out an event form, that's going to have to come before you approve it.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
Can you, can you add kind of the, these potential costs and you check required, required, not required?
That's what we thought we'd, yeah, yeah, agreed.
And then that way, you can, you can say, well, this, you know, we're not going to require a cleaning cost because they're not going to use the bathroom.
Right.
Perfect. So we put right on this sheet here, Madison Street requests for use of plaza electricity. Well, it's got restrooms. Are you requesting the city a restroom facility in the plaza? Yes, open.
So we need to figure out a fee for, for restrooms.
Right. And then, okay, so we want to put a fee schedule on that?
Yeah.
Basically at fifty bucks, you're thinking?
I think if you read it more, I mean.
Fifty covers the cleaning, doesn't cover any supplies. If it's a, if it's a one-event type thing, if it's a private event, then, you know, kind of a couple rolls of toilet paper, that's about it.
Supply's still coming out of common council.
Excuse me?
At nineteen, we're paying supplies down at common council.
Yeah. Out of council. Perfect.
No, I'm just thinking, I think we've kind of hit the, now, what about all the, that covers some expenses, right? It doesn't cover the two hundred dollars that's left out in electrical and water.
Say that again.
It doesn't cover the expense of electrical and water, right? We haven't touched that, that's two hundred dollars a month. Now, that's, but that's heavy use, right? That's for events.
Well, I put on there, use of electricity on this one here, and we just put yes or no.
But we got no, we're going to charge to use electricity.
Right. You tell me, if it's a week, it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five is what?
That's, that matches, that matches the.
Customer.
Well, and it matches what the actual cost has been, really, by the week.
And we can always raise it down the road if we need to, to keep up with inflation.
Again, the whole idea here is not, it's to cover costs.
Yeah, correct.
Not trying to make money.
So fifty on cleaning and twenty-five on electricity? Restrooms, yes, so there would be a cleaning to charge if that was on the restroom?
Right.
Okay.
Hundred dollar safe deposit.
Need a hundred dollar deposit. Sounds fine to me. Anybody else?
Is it the same for private and public? Does it matter?
Well, I think the differentiation would, differentiation would be. On the public, do we eat the electric cost or? Kind of what the chamber does on profit or not-for-profit, right? They're not going to, for the not-for, to not charge them for electricity.
I would say public events, we don't charge that. If it's for the total public, the good of the caterer.
Sort of paid, paid for though.
What's that?
We still got a budget for it then.
Right. And right now, we've got it coming out of, well, that material is coming out of.
Electricity, all the utilities, this budget didn't come council.
Okay. We want people to use.
Right, we're paying for the counters part.
License is another part. They're going to pay it, electricity bill.
Quality.
What do you think? I, I think we're on here. I mean, it sounds like hundred dollar safe deposit per event, fifty dollars if you use fifty dollars if you use the bathroom per event, twenty-five if you use electricity per event, for-
For private.
For private.
And those things would be on the, the check boxes in the-
Yeah, on that page, basically.
Try it for a year, and see, I'll give you, if you can't afford to pay electric and-
I'll check on the host liquor liability and see if they can purchase that privately. I'll do that tomorrow. So the, on the front, it's not, under fees, it's just going, it's not going to have a fee, it's just, see fees under-
Usage.
Under usage, okay, it's just going to be-
Yeah.
Hundred dollar deposit per event. Is there anything else on the first page that, that needs edited from the last updated version, other than the deposit and taking out the rental fee? If not, on the second page, is there anything that needs edited?
Uh, the, the smoke, the smoking, if, if we have it-
Says except in designated areas.
Does it say that?
Yeah, yeah. Except in designated areas, are we, but it, but the-
It says-
Bill's got a hand up.
Okay.
This man. What's up, Bill?
Just one question, whose responsibility is it to keep it private? Do you understand what I'm saying? It's our public place. Is it the city's responsibility, once you rent this out, for the city to keep it private? Or is it the people that rent it? They're responsible to keep it private? Then how do they use that? That's how I mean-
It's a fair question, I mean-
Sounds like, maybe, sounds like a difficult question.
Currently, there's a lot of family reunions that take place, let's say, at Legion Park, under the pavilion there.
Okay.
It's a private event, okay? I don't know if, if anybody crashes their party, and they crash their party, I don't know if it's something that now-
No, I would assume if they, if they're having a private event, and they paid us a deposit, and they paid the fees for it, if they have an issue, they can call law enforcement. They've rented the space for that amount of time, so it's their space. They paid the city.
So it's their responsibility, their responsibility, they post their sign, and they want to, if it's that big issue, and they want to call law enforcement to say that-
A problem.
They have a problem, and I'd let that up there.
So as a, as a city, we're not going to guarantee if this thing is going to stay private, because it's right out there-
Just like a park.
In it, yeah. Okay. I don't know if you need that verbiage in there, but, I mean, once, once they, yeah, they say-
Well, if it's over two hundred people, you're going to have an officer anyway, right?
Right.
Mm-hmm. I mean, well, how do you police it at Cannon Park when you rent it for twenty-five dollars for the day?
You don't.
Okay.
And like, if somebody tried to crash their family reunion at Cannon Park, and you had an issue, you'd probably call police department, say, hey, send somebody over here, we got someone-
We've rented this plaza for the day, or the hour, or two hours, or something like that, could you come and remove them from the park? Okay, so, back to page two, any, any corrections to that?
Um, yeah, I got one on tents. Tents are permitted on Madison Street Plaza, including pop-up tents and tents that would be installed by professionals, not tent company, they have to be trained. I got the forms for that, and we post those in the windows.
Just take out, take out tent company.
Tent company, right there, scratch that. If you're installing a tent that is larger than twenty by twenty, you're required by the Indiana State Fire Marshal's Office to have a completed tent installation form signed by the tent installer, on file for the state fire marshal's inspection. Basically, we've been just taping them inside the window of the storage room. Say, please use the existing tent anchors, install professional tents, the use of stakes to install tents is prohibited. I would say, sometimes, if we have something that's longer, we, they have a tendency to use a concrete thing, and we usually borrow them from Gant or somebody like that, so, as long as it's not into the pavement, I think it's a problem.
Okay, so changing, taking out the word tent company on line two?
Yep.
And, and then the one, two, three, fourth line, tent installer-
Yep, and they scratch that.
And scratch company.
Yeah, I've got forms for that, Les has given me forms for that, for the, we'll share those with anybody, we'll have them on file here.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Anything else on that page? Third page, alcohol guidelines. Um, Craig brought up, brought up the point at the bottom of that page, bartending service will cease serving alcohol thirty minutes prior. That, he voiced his opinion on that, where's everybody stand on that one?
I'm fine with that, I would leave all the alcohol up to the permit.
Yeah.
Bartending service can't fall.
They want it, that's theirs. So strike this thing at the very bottom, okay? And then Craig's going to follow up with the insurance side of things.
Yeah.
Um, bartending service, police officers, that's all spelled out, they need police, uh, it's up to them to hire the police, not, not them to go through the city on that, right? That's-
Right.
Correct, okay?
That's on them.
Yep. All right. And then we're going to have the checklist page, and, uh-
Hey, it's great.
Well, insurance issue, isn't that covered here in the last line, where they have to-
Copy bartending service insurance.
Right, and then they have to have a one million dollar in coverage for that day.
I'll just check into it. You have, you, you can answer that, I-
Well, I don't know, it depends on the terms of the coverage.
Well, if it's a Henzy Depot, we make them, make up the additional insurance for the one day, I think that says that down here, too.
Yeah, but it, I, I think the issue is, in the case of use of alcohol, whether this gap coverage that Craig was referring to, applies to the city if it's a private event. And if it doesn't, then do we require them to have that gap coverage?
I'll just, I'll just check into it and find out if the additionally insured is good enough to cover for alcohol. And if it's not, I mean, if it's not necessary for them to be additionally insured of them, I'm, I'm just checking for the liquor liability portion. We checked into it a couple of years ago, and that's what they told us we would be best suited to do, to fill up the gap when there's alcohol between the city and the person serving the liquor. Okay. Hey, Melissa, you made notes on a lot of this? Okay, so here's what I'll propose, I will propose then that, uh, this evening, in the next week or so, Melissa will create a final draft of this, email to everyone, and if it's okay, then at the next council meeting, we vote okay. If it's not okay, let it be known, you know, share it back so we can discuss it.
I mean, I think it's just important to note that, if you look at all the events, we already, they've all been public events, right?
So far.
So far, yeah.
And if we're averaging two hundred dollars in the water and electrical, what we're talking about right now is that, we, common council's going to be on the hook for two hundred dollars a month during the season, which I would consider to be probably seven to eight months, right?
Right.
So we can, we can assume that, right now, it's going to be about fifteen hundred dollars to cover the cost of use on this, from common council. That's kind of what we're talking about here. And I think it's okay, and I think maybe, maybe we just need to read it for the next year and realize that-
Plus supplies, I don't, I don't know how much the supplies are-
I think that might be covered, I mean, fifty dollars per event-
In the fees, yeah.
For bathroom.
One, one question I have, that I don't know that you resolved, we kind of talked about it, but what happens if somebody submits an event form, and you approve it, they pay their deposit, and a week before the event, and I'm talking primarily a private event, they, they say they want to cancel? Do you, do you just refund the deposit at that point?
I think you do, because in situations where you have an unrefundable deposit, is when they're trying to make money, right? We lost an opportunity to make money because you canceled on us beforehand.
Well, the other, the other issue there is, what's to prevent somebody from reserving a bunch of dates?
They're not using it.
And not using it, and that denies other parties that want to use it for that. So there is another reason for the forfeiture of the deposit, and that's because somebody else was denied the opportunity to use it. So I, I don't know if that's an issue for you guys or not, but-
I would say upfront, right now, that's not an issue.
If it becomes an issue-
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of calls, every, to use the plaza?
Not yet, no, I have a good idea.
Good. And I think it will get used in the winter some, you know, I really do. Okay, any other comments on this? If not, like I said, Melissa can make a final draft, send it out, first comments, let us know.
Some different insurance companies almost. Get back.
Okay, uh, that is everything I had, Tim, do you have anything this evening?
We have.
Phyllis, do you have anything, Ma?
Yeah.
Yes?
If we can make Nicholas Ingel is sworn in as our, a place reserve, we just need to make that a matter of record.
So moved. Second. Have a motion in a second to make the oath of office of Nicholas Ingel a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Anything else, Phyllis?
And then, a legal notice that I published the ordinance two thousand eighteen dash fifteen, that's the one for the utilities regarding liability for invoicing city services. So I think that takes effect October first, right? So that has been published.
Matter of record?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second to make this a matter of record, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One more thing, the fire department's going to have an annual open house, so they just need approval for this event. Um, they just want to close the street on Seventh Street from Jefferson to Adam Street, um, and Jefferson Street from Seventh to Eighth.
This is when?
And this will be October tenth, from four-thirty to, use military time here, twenty, what's twenty?
Eight o'clock, eight.
Good.
Military time.
Okay.
Seeing a motion? Yeah, everything's been checked off, so, yeah, it's a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the open house for the fire department, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, Phyllis? Les, anything?
Um, yeah, I, uh, just, thanks to all the guys, two Friday nights, yeah, two Friday nights ago.
You're stealing my thunder, go ahead.
Well, okay, uh, I just, it was, uh, it was, it was a pretty, uh, it was a great response initially, a lot of things that we did, uh, saved, saved us from, still possibly being, going on in Allen County.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the, the guys initially, the, some, some responsibility, got some things done, and, and that outstanding teamwork effort.
Absolutely. I'm going to piggyback on that and just say that, yes, uh, was it the seventh, the sixth, or whatever that Friday night was, and I got a text message from Don around nine o'clock that they were, had been called out on a jet fuel leak, and that they were over, over at the Mammoth Road Bridge, and I, I got my truck and drove over there, and I was only there a few minutes, it was raining, but what I saw was, I, I saw a Jeremy Gilbert and a Don Bergdahl, and a Jeff Sheets, and a Tim Baumann, and a John August, and a group of other volunteer firemen. I saw a, I think it was a Reed Arnold, and a Joel Jackson, and a Lenny Crowell, and a few of the other police officers, and they all came together, and they got, they, on their own, this was not by Buckeye Pipeline or any other emergency response team, on their own, they called in, I think, was it Preble and Bluffton?
Initially, um, Preble, uh, Bluffton has not, trailer to get some supplies.
And they got right over here, Bluffton did.
Burn fire department for one boat, Genua Fire Department for one boat, um, everyone did a wonderful job, that-
They all, they all convened here quickly, and because of that, then I believe they split into groups, and they took Bluffton's boom, and they put it at the, the River View, at the Mammoth Road Bridge, and then, who knew that Bungie had the boom?
Well, we've known, we've known, uh, Bungie had that resource a long time, and we actually practiced with them once a year to deploy it.
Okay.
They have it in, in case they would have a relief.
Right.
But they made it available.
So knowing that Bungie had a boom, they contacted Bungie, they got their boom, and they split into another team, and they took a boat, and they took personnel, and they went out to County Road nine hundred, they put out that boom. Now, up and, up to this point, now, there's two booms on the river already, because of our guys. Had that not happened, I don't know how much longer after that it was before the actual emergency responders got here representing Buckeye, but our guys, because of the quick response of our guys, that water really was very limited in getting beyond County Road nine hundred.
It was very much advantageous for us to keep it in our county.
Yep.
That was just really the-
Yeah, then when the other, when Buckeye got here, and the emergency response teams got here, then they put a boom out of County Road twelve hundred, and they put one up by near Poe, and they went all the way up near the Elmer McDonald Bridge and put one in Allen County up there, but in the meetings over the next few days, all we heard was that, we're not seeing anything getting beyond County Road nine hundred, because of the quick response of the local guys, so.
In this for the public, uh, you know, there, there is going to be some, what they call a, a SCAP plan, it's, it's, uh, it's shoreline control initiatives, techniques, there will probably be some debris, uh, woody debris that's going to have to be analyzed, and whether it's going to be, um, hopefully not cleaned up, it's, it's going to be cleaned up and removed, because it's, it's not something that's, you know, can be decontaminated, but, you know, so there's still going to be, they're, they're going to have some ongoing operations and, and some additional cleanup here and there, but, you know, for the most part, our response was quick and very precise and contained.
But, once that whole thing went into action, it was really impressive, you know, there's, I don't know what they said, a hundred and fifty or so people that were here, representing Buckeye, federal EPA, Indiana Department of Environmental Management, uh, and they set up at our emergency operations center at the jail, and, you know, they were all wearing their special colored vests, and they had flags up saying, who, this was logistics, and this was claims, and this was finance, and I mean, they, it was very well organized, yeah. And it went on for a better part of a week and a half, until, uh, just recently, when they, this, you know, they dispersed, and now they're just basically operating out of the local hotels, and they're, we're still getting an update daily-
Yep.
-operations plan, so, you know, it's still ongoing, but, uh- And we got a press release today that, that, uh, we posted social media, why is we also sent it to both of your entities, uh, that they're going to start the repair work. Jeremy, you have that copy? Yeah? Yep.
Um, it proves the fact that you do need a good working relationship with all of the employees. We've worked with that by point so much over the years, got to know all the guys very, very, uh, that tough guy. Uh, the night that that call came in, I received a call from the ship captain, fire department, said, hey, can you come and help me? I'm smelling a little bit of, well, you can't, it's diesel, you know? Thinking that out, you know, I wonder what this is? But Buckeye had been calling for the last four, four weeks, keeping me aware of the work that they're doing, finding river. So, you know, took a bright night, had a million other things going through your mind, and when I turned off Thirteenth Street, headed down Washington to the east, and I could still see the lights on down at the river, you get that, something sick to your stomach, mainly, because pretty much knew what had just happened. And that's when I met the ship captain off bridge, and told him, I said, Tim, I think, I know what's going on here, so, that's, boy, to make the whole trip back around and to get access to where they were at, I represent Buckeye, that I've worked with many times over the last fourteen years, and had been hitched, hitched the road, and said, you know, he was just beside himself, you know, we don't know what happened, that's what fueled it, it's all information right up front. He hadn't long contacted but us, um, at that point, but, that had helped that he was so open with us, to know on what the terminal was weighed down. And it, it helped with us to be able to do a couple of our action plans to what we're going to do from then on, because he was still making contacts with environmental cleanup companies, EPA, IM, and, you know, it's like anything else, you either, you either got to go, or you don't go, and if you don't go, then, you know, you're going to suffer the consequences from it. The guys did a very wonderful job. Um, Jim Hitchcock is still off, Les was out on some other things, um, Les did meet up with us a little bit later on, but, uh, Tim and I- but Tim and I, and John August kinda coordinated everything, and I have really met the guys, they did a very wonderful job with all the agencies.
Yep.
We had county, we had county reserves, we had deputies, we had sheriff, and the deputy sheriff, and, you know, everyone was there, hey, what you want, what you need, it was very, very wonderful.
Well, thank all of you for your quick response and good decision-making. Kevin?
Like Phil said, they told you, it's gonna affect October first, so you own rental property, you can get those forms in October first, I'm gonna complete, I sent out a letter last week, everybody we have on file, so that really helped, we gave a big response to that couple of days. See you, Bill, in a couple weeks.
Mike?
Nothing, Mike, thank you.
You let the chief go on vacation, didn't you?
I did. I thought Bungie was my last name for a second. You got through it.
Kurt? Don? Jeremy, anything else?
Yeah, just Buckeye is gonna start the repair process in that line. They're back and forth, this is what they're gonna do, they're actually gonna shut both Washington Street, starting tomorrow, from Walnut Street to Second. It's more of a safety precautionary closure. As far as this part of Washington Street, will be closed to pure traffic between Walnut, on the west, and Second on the east, along pipeline, for continued progress. This expected segment of Washington Street will close Wednesday, September nineteenth, approximately eight AM, and our best estimate to open will be on Saturday, the twenty-ninth. This segment of Washington Street will be open to local traffic only, so if you live there, you can get access, if you don't live there, stay away from it. What they're going to do is, they're gonna replace about one hundred feet of that pipeline, so they will be more into the river and then tighten that back in, basically across the middle of us, for highway service. Putting that in there, it's hundred.
Ann? Bill? Melissa? Public? Council members? One more chance, Tim. Nothing else? Island Vibes is gonna be this Thursday, you guys, come on out for seven to nine. Laza. Look for a motion to pay the claims?
So move.
Second, I have a motion in a second to pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.